Good evening. Welcome to our city commission, your city commission meeting. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. We begin the meeting with the call to order and the pledge of allegiance followed by a silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a proclamation. Whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and they build active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase the community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas the parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives have designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the City of Leavenworth recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resource. Now therefore, I, as a proud mayor of the City of Lebanon, Fourth Kansas, do hereby —
————————————————
Next item on the agenda is Adopt a Park presentation.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, tonight I bring to you the acknowledge of the adoption of our parks. We have three adopted parks here. We have one representative here from one of our adopted parks. North Esplanade Park was adopted by families of North Esplanade Park. That is from, by Haley Shaw. The second one is David Brewer Park. It's been adopted by Princess Scarlett and families. That's Daria Torchbridge, Torchbridge, sorry.
Oh, Torchbridge.
The third one is Bob Doherty Park. It's been adopted by Leavenworth County Community Corrections, and that is Caitlin Henderson, and she's here with us tonight. The Parks and Recreation Department offers an adopted park program which encourages residents, community organizations, businesses to become directly involved in improving our city parks and landscape areas. The adopted park, the adoption of these parks, the adoptions of these three parks brings our total number to seventeen, which is very, very good. They, these groups provide the parks with general trash pickup, weeding of flower beds, planting of flowers, mulching of the flower beds, and other landscaping, general maintenance to our shelters as deemed necessary and appropriate. A sign will be erected at each location that these are adopted, and if you have any questions.
Mr. Bailey, so you said seventeen are adopted. How many are left?
So, a lot.
A lot, okay.
Because we can still do green spaces, open spaces, along with all the left parks that we actually have.
And those are listed?
Most of them are listed on our website.
Okay, thanks.
Can we give these groups a round of applause?
Well, I was going to say that.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great, great program. Thank you very much.
Will they stand up?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think we just have one here, but thank you. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the organizations who adopt parks in our community. Some of us have been doing it for many years, some of our organizations, so.
Very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Anything else?
That's great.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is new employee welcome.
Do you have anybody here from H. John?
We do not. Nope, so you can, if you want to go through those.
I will be happy to. Okay, first, first person is Will Halsted. Will was hired on February 18, 2021 as a WPC Operator One. He graduated from Leavenworth High and received Associates of Science from Barton Community College. We have Jordan Lantner, who was hired on March 4, 2021 as Records Clerk. Jordan graduated from Pleasant Ridge High School and previously worked with Exchange Bank. We have Lee Williams was hired March 4, 2021 as a WPC Operator One. Lee graduated from Leavenworth High School. Brian Faust, Brian was hired on March 10, 2021 as Public Works Director. Brian graduated from Raytown South High School and received a BS in Civil Engineering from Missouri University and a Master of Science in Structural Engineering from Iowa State University. We have Pamela Nurk. Pamela was hired on March 18, 2021 as a Brush Site Operator Sign Installer. She graduated from Lansing High School. We have Derek Burleson. Derek was hired on April 15, 2021 as Operations Superintendent. Derek graduated from Linwood High School, received a BS in Organizational Management/Criminal Justice from Ashford University and an MS in Project Management/Information System Management from Grantham University. He retired from the Leavenworth Police Department as a Sergeant in 2016 after 20 years of service. Eric McIntyre, Eric was hired on April 15, 2021 as a firefighter. Eric graduated from Lawrence High School. He was previously employed with Evergy. Alan Bauer, BA Bauer. Alan was hired on April 15, 2021 as a firefighter. Alan graduated from Shawnee Mission Northwest High School and received a BS in Pre-Physical Therapy from Southern Nazarene University. Robert Beer, Robert, Roberta Beer. Roberta was hired on April 15, 2021 as Deputy Director of Finance. Roberta graduated from Glenn Legg High School and received a BS in Business Administration from University of Kansas. She previously worked at the American Civil Liberties Union in Kansas City. Michael Garrison, too. Michael was hired on April 22, 2021 as a police officer. Michael graduated from Leavenworth High School and previously worked with Wesley Office Management. Jennifer Chadwick. Jennifer was hired on April 22, 2021 as a Kennel Attendant. Jennifer graduated from Baser Linwood High School. Courtney Hobbs was hired on May 6, 2021 as a police officer. Courtney graduated from Blue Springs High School and received a Bachelor of Science in Applied Computer Technology/Criminal Justice from Missouri Western University. Leanna Fannin was hired on May 13, 2021 as an accountant. Leanna graduated from West Platte High School. Tymac Cobb was hired on May 13, 2021 as a solid waste laborer. Tymac graduated from Inglewood High School. Patrick Clark was hired on May 27, 2021 as a pool manager. Patrick graduated from Leavenworth High School and received a Bachelor of General Studies in Organization Communication from the University of Kansas. Jacob Lo, Jacob was hired on May 27, 2021 as an IT Specialist One. Jacob graduated from Leavenworth High School and received a Bachelor of Science in Computer Science with a focus in cybersecurity from the University of St. Mary. Antonio Richardson was hired on June 10, 2021 as a police officer. Antonio graduated from Oris Dimba High School. Brayden Tooney, Brayden was hired on July 1, 2021 as a police officer. Brayden graduated from Enterprise High School. He previously worked at Core Civic as a correctional officer. Welcome all employees. We're glad you're here. We look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Can we, can we ask the ones that are here that have been introduced to stand up and introduce yourselves so we know who's who? Come on up to the mic maybe, just so we, he'll be on TV and who's who.
He's working tonight.
On somebody's computer.
Yeah. He's been working already.
Hello? Jake, how's it going? Um, what do you guys want to know?
You're the IT specialist. Your job is the IT specialist.
I'm the IT specialist.
Thank you.
I work over at Police Department most of the time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Anyone else here? Oh, tell us about yourself.
Thank you, guys. Okay, next, next item is old business. Consideration of previous meeting minutes. Is there any questions or comments on the previous minutes from, from June 22?
I'll move to approve the minutes from our previous meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and please begin voting Commissioner Leonhardt.
Aye.
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 Four to zero, thank you. Next item on the agenda, public comment. Anyone call in, Carla?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, public hearing. Public hearing to consider a petition to vacate a portion of Sanders Street. And I believe we need to open a public hearing first. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, I move that we open a public hearing to consider a petition to vacate a portion of Sanders, Sanders Street.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and please begin voting Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 Aye. Four to zero, thank you. Comments from the public and staff?
I'll turn this over to our Public Works Director, Brian Faust.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The property owner, Mr. Mark Clark, owns the property on both sides of the right-of-way on Sanders Street in the area of the vacation request. Mr. Clark would like to construct a detached garage north of his home, but it would encroach on the current right-of-way. At this time, Sanders Street has not been constructed, and we did include a couple photographs in your packet that shows the area. And looking at the topography, constructing Sanders Street would be challenging and would require significant drainage structures to the east of this property. City staff did review the proposal and the location and offers the following observations. There are platted lots and homes west of Terrace Road, but no platted right-of-way. If this section of Sanders Street were to be constructed in the future, it would terminate at Terrace Road. There are drainage ways east of the property that would require significant drainage structures if a road was constructed, and by retaining utility easement through the area, future utilities could use the area if needed. The city does have a contractual obligation with our major utilities to allow them to use the right-of-way for their purposes. We did contact all the utility companies, and there were no objections. With the costs associated with constructing a future road that is limited to Terrace on the west end and Grand Avenue on the east, the City Engineer Office does support the vacation request, and Mr. Clark is here today if you have any questions.
Okay. Mr. Clark, do you have any comments, or are you welcome to come to the podium?
No, ma'am, I have another question.
Okay, thank you. Do the Commissioners have any questions or comments?
Just a quick question from Mr. Clark and Mr. Faust. So the garage is going to be built in what, in that Sanders Street vacated area?
Correct, and one of the photographs actually is from Terrace looking straight to the east and shows that gravel drive.
Yeah.
And that's basically where the street right-of-way is.
Okay.
And so he'd be building, the plan is, we haven't seen the plan yet, but that's what he would like to do.
So it's an outbuilding that...
Correct, is that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And we, and we do retain a 15-foot utility easement on the very north edge of the right-of-way in case in the future anybody needs to locate there. We are retaining that.
Okay.
Would, would that be used if, for some reason, there, there would be an extension of the road? I know that's very unlikely at this point. That's been one of the factors in, in your recommendation, staff's recommendation to the Commission, right?
Right. We don't envision this road ever being extended, but if, you know, the power company or someone needed to go through there, that gives them that ability.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I see, it looks like railroad ties or something drove by it again today. Are those, were those placed by the city or you, Mr. Clark, for erosion control, or...
I put that there so nobody would back on the roadway.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? If not, do I have a motion to close the public meeting?
Still moved.
A second.
It's been moved in second, and please begin voting Commissioner Leonhardt.
Aye.
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 Four to zero. Public hearing is closed. Okay, first consideration ordinance to vacate. Is there a consensus to move forward with this?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, guys. Okay, next item on the agenda, consider cereal malt beverage license requests.
Carla Williamson, our City Clerk.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this is a request, we have a request from three different businesses for cereal malt beverage license. One off-premise located at Sam's Food Mart, 1031 Metropolitan, that is just new ownership. Next one is an off-premise license, Shop Smart Number Two at 700 Eisenhower Road, that also is just new ownership, and then on-premise consumption license for the New Way located at 510 Shawnee, and this would be a new license, there hasn't been one at this location previously, so this is a request for a new CMB license. The Fire Department and Police Department have reviewed the applications and have shown that they would be appropriate, so it would just be up to the Commission to approve them if they so desire.
Okay. Are there any questions, comments?
No.
If not, would I, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the 2021 off-premise cereal malt beverage licenses for Sam's Food Mart at 1031 Metropolitan Avenue and Shop Smart Number Two at 700 Eisenhower Road, and the 2021 on-premise cereal malt beverage license for New Way at 510 Shawnee Street.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, please begin voting Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 Four to zero, thank you. Next item, Mayor's Appointment, City Planning Commission. I move to appoint to the City Planning Commission Donald Holman to an unexpired term ending May 1, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, please begin voting Commissioner Leonhardt.
Aye.
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 Four to zero, thank you. Next item on the agenda, Resolution B 2285.
This will be our Assistant City Manager Taylor Tedder for this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commission. So before you tonight, as a resolution of intent that would allow 21st Century Management LLC, the holding company for MAPS Inc., to utilize the city's state and local sales tax exemption for labor, building materials, machinery, and equipment. So let me give you a little bit of background on the company and how we've come to this point. So last year, I was approached by Daryl Yoder, and he's the President and CEO of MAPS Inc., which stands for Modern Advanced Print Solutions, and they're a progressive independent technology company that features leading imaging and printing products, services, software and solutions. So essentially, they're a partner for information technology, infrastructure, software, and different solutions. So they're currently located in Lenexa, and they need more space, and this is for their corporate headquarters. So they reached out to Steve Jack with LCDC, who in turn connected them with me, and they ended up purchasing a lot in the Gary Carlson Business Park from the Port Authority, and that lot is just north of the former C-MOP property, which is just south of the former Canaan Stoneworks building, and it's about 2.93 acres. And so they currently own that, and they've been working with city staff to move forward with the IRB process so that they can build this over 10,000-square-foot new facility in Leavenworth. So the building will be over a million dollars and over $200,000 in machinery and equipment. They'll also be bringing 21 existing jobs with them, so this is a great opportunity for our community to have a new building and a fantastic company that I've been very impressed with. They place a high value on corporate, corporate citizenry, and, and I've been really pleased working with both Mr. Yoder and the firm Pulsinelli that, that they've hired for this process. Essentially, tonight, you approving the resolution, resolution of intent would allow them to use that sales tax exemption certificate. In the event that you don't ultimately issue the IRBs, then that, that would go away, but I don't foresee any, any issues with that.
Sounds exciting.
Can you tell us about number of employees approximately of MAPS and what their plans are, when to start building, when will they be operational, approximately?
They're bringing the 21 jobs, and they, they will have opportunity to expand, but they're not sure of the number at this time, or at least I'm not sure on that. But they would like to start construction as soon as possible, so as soon as they get this tax exemption certificate, they're going to start with breaking ground and trying to get vertical soon. So I would expect next year would be when they're, when they're looking to move here.
Where are they located now?
In Lenexa.
Okay, as you said at the beginning, okay, thank you.
And as always with the industrial revenue bond process, there's, there's no liability on the city. It's essentially a pass-through where they, where their bank purchased the, the bonds, and that gives them their possible property tax abatement and then the sales tax exemption.
Okay.
But the result of, if, if the Commission decides to approve this, is that this MAPS can use the city's state and local tax exemption for labor, building materials, and machinery and equipment?
Correct. So anything that they purchase to build their facility and equip it, that would be savings to them of the sales tax.
It essentially gives them an advance and able to start doing that now.
Okay.
To acquire materials and such. If, in the event the bond should not be issued, then they would not, they would have to pay that tax.
Right.
Back at the time, but this, but there's, the statute provides for this as, since there's a whole bunch of steps to get the IRBs issued and such, this allows the project to continue and proceed. But, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution B 2285, the resolution of intent to issue IRBs for MAPS Incorporated as presented.
A second.
It's been moved in seconded, please begin voting Commissioner Leonhardt.
Aye.
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 Thank you, four to zero. Next thing on the agenda, bids, contract and agreement, consider addendum number one, Lions Club Trash Bag Delivery Agreement 2007-05.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this is really kind of just a housekeeping item. Back in 2007, the city and the Lions Club entered into a agreement to deliver trash bags. The Lions Club delivers those on behalf of the city, and the city reimburses them at a cost per bag for that delivery. Over the years, somewhere between the beginning of the agreement period in 2018, the price did increase, to increase to 45 cents per bag, and then during the 2018 budget process, the Lions Club requested an increase to 55 cents a roll, and that was approved by the Commission at the, at the, at the time of the budget. However, a formal addendum to the original contract was never prepared, so at this time we're just going back and, like I said, just kind of cleaning house a little bit and doing an addendum to that original contract from 2007 to show the current price of 55 cents per roll.
Okay, so this is just, consider the addendum.
Correct.
Any other questions on this, since we already approved it? I would entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll move to approve addendum number one to contract 2007-05 Lions Club Trash Bag Delivery Agreement.
A second.
It's been moved in seconded, please begin voting Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Next item on the agenda, consider purchase of truck for water pollution control through Sourcewell.
We have our Public Works Director, Brian Faust, and then also our Tim Guardato, the Superintendent of the Wastewater Treatment Plant for this item.
Good evening, again.
Again, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The issue this evening is to consider approval of a purchase of a 2002 Ford Super Duty F-250 pickup truck for water pollution control. Water pollution control is currently using a 17-year-old pickup truck for a variety of jobs, including picking up and hauling parts to and from work sites, sewer callouts, checking lift stations, as well as transportation to and from training and testing facilities. This vehicle was included in the 2021 capital improvements program with an estimated cost of $50,000. City staff contacted National Auto Fleet Group, which is a member of Sourcewell, to obtain a quote for this truck and discuss equipment needed for WPC. The city did receive a quote for $45,199.62 for a 2022 Ford Super Duty F-250 four-wheel drive with a snowplow and lift gate. And staff does recommend the City Commission approve the purchase of the 2022 Ford pickup at a cost of $45,199.62.
Any questions?
Mr. Faust, Mr. Guardato, if we approve this, how long does it take? Because you hear stories that pickup trucks are sitting everywhere without a chip and...
Right, they'll start actually production of the 2022 models in August of this year. We don't have a feel for the timeframe.
No.
Hopefully before the end of 2022.
Hopefully before the other one falls apart, right? Right.
So, unknown at this point.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
What happens to the 17-year-old vehicle?
It's probably on auction, Purple Wave.
Purple Wave, okay.
All right. I don't have any other questions. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the purchase of the three-quarter ton four-wheel-drive truck with snowplow through National Auto Fleet in an amount not to exceed $45,199.62.
A second.
It's been moved in seconded, please begin voting Commissioner Leonhardt.
Aye.
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 Four to zero, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is it a three-quarter ton or is it a ton or four?
It's a three-quarter ton, yeah, okay.
Last item on the agenda, consent agenda, and I will ask Commissioner Leonhardt to, to resent this.
I move to approve claims for June 19, 2021 through July 9, 2021, in the amount of $1,240,441.15 net amount for payroll number 13 effective July 2, 2021, in the amount of $356,963.45. No police and fire pension.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, please begin voting with Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 Thank you. That is the end of our agenda for tonight. Mr. Kramer, do you have anything?
No, ma'am, I do not.
All right, we'll go around the, around the table. Commissioner Prisinger, do you have anything?
Just want to remind everyone, early voting or advanced voting starts tomorrow, 8 o'clock at the City, County Clerk's Office, and that's until Monday at noon, Monday noon, August 2nd, and after that, in-person voting at your regular polling place. But once again, starting tomorrow, the next two and a half weeks, you can do advanced voting at the County Clerk's Office. Thank you.
Commissioner Griswold.
Just very quickly, there was a email sent out by the Director of our Library, Public Library, and just advising our citizens that the requirement for masks will start again tomorrow, which is Wednesday, and he said many library patrons already wear masks consistently to accommodate those who may arrive without a mask handy. Our supply was replenished today, and they will be available at the main and used services desk. But he cited the, what's happened over the last couple of weeks, active cases two weeks ago of COVID-19, 21, last week 44, active cases now 67, and unfortunately, one person has passed away, so that was his rationale for that.
Yes, that's really sad.
Health, Health Department, the VA, if you're a veteran, and various, many of the drugstores, so please, please, if you're not vaccinated, consider doing so immediately. Thank you.
That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, one second. Commissioner Leonhardt. No, 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 you didn't.
No, I was just, I think, no, we were...
I got you on notice now.
Yeah, we're watching you. So, no, no, Madam Mayor and I were talking earlier, and I'm sure the other Commissioners will agree as well, just condolences to Jermaine Wilson and his family for the sudden passing of his brother, so we just wanted to give our condolences to that.
Yes, thank you. Do you have anything else today?
No, I have nothing else.
I don't have anything else today. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Please begin voting. Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
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 We are adjourned.
I'm going to start it, no.
I'm sorry, I kind of threw that at you, but you had, the way you said it, I thought, I didn't just let you do it.
And I remembered.
We are adjourned.
I'm going to start it, no.
I'm sorry, I kind of threw that at you, but you, you had, the way you said it, I thought, I didn't just let you do it.
And I remembered.